Good afternoon, everyone. This is Richard Hackett from Community Planning and Permitting. We are recording. You may begin.
Thanks, Rick. This is Commissioner Mark Loomfield. This is the September 21st meeting of the Boulder County Planning Commission. We'll now come to order. Due to COVID-19 concerns, this meeting is being held virtually. Information on how to participate in the virtual meeting has been posted on the planning commission webpage at www.boco.org/PC. There will be an opportunity to remotely provide public comments on the docket listed on the agenda item during the respective, or during the public hearing portion of that docket, providing instructions about that when we get to each docket on the agenda. So we'll start with roll call. Mark Loomfield here and Goldfarb.
Here.
Sam Liddy.
Here.
David Shum.
Here.
Chris Whitney.
Here.
And Connor Kennedy.
Here.
A reminder for commissioners, please identify yourself before speaking. Speak slowly and clearly. All votes will be roll call votes. Please keep your video on when possible during hearing. Please remain on mute until you speak. When you begin speaking, please identify yourself as a planning commissioner. It may help to keep your participant list open in Zoom so that you can see who is speaking. The person who is speaking will be involved. Okay, so minutes first, agenda item. Any corrections to the minutes from last time? I have motion for approval.
Commissioner Libby, I move to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
I have second.
Commissioner Rennie, second.
Roll call votes. Mark Loomfield, I, and Goldfarb.
I.
Sam Liddy.
Hi.
David Shum.
Hi.
Chris Whitney.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, honestly. Staff updates. Cameron, can you say you had a staff update?
Can you hear me?
There we go. Unmute. It's been a while. Good afternoon, planning commissioners. Kim Sanchez, Deputy Director, Community Planning and Permitting. I am excited to announce that we are working towards having live in-person public hearings again. So the commissioners' hearing room on the third floor of the courthouse has been remodeled, and that remodel is complete, and we have been working on training all the appropriate staff to use the new system that we have, which will allow for a hybrid hearing, meaning people who wish to attend virtually will be able to do so, and people that wish to attend in person, including our commissions and any applicants and public and staff, would be able to attend in person. So we're looking to launch the first planning commission hybrid meeting for July. We're working towards that. We'd like to set up a training session with you prior to that. Did I say July? I meant October. Yeah, sorry. I don't know where that came from. We're looking to have our first planning commission hybrid meeting in October, on October 19th. And so we'd like to have a training session with you ahead of, ahead of time. We will talk with you about scheduling some dates that may work after we get through the proceedings today. We'd like to get through that first before we start, you know, seeing people's availability, but that is something that we have. If you don't mind staying on for just a few minutes after the docket, we will work that out. But it's really exciting. We're doing a soft rollout with the Board of County Commissioners hearings right now. So first, having staff present live starting next week. After that, we'll be inviting applicants to come in, assuming that we work out all of the kinks that staff identifies, and then we'll be looking to just do this on a regular basis. So anyway, that's the latest on that, and I know everybody is probably very anxious to get back together in person, although it will still be nice to have the flexibility for people to attend virtually if they're not, you know, able to come down to the physical location of the courthouse. Any questions until we have the discussion about the training session? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Please can. Okay, we just have one docket item for today, so I'll go over the public process when we get to the public process part of that docket item. So, let's see. So this is a public hearing for docket SU-21-0017, Mountain State's Children's Home Expansion. We will now hear from Sam Walker on staff. If you could please present your staff report.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Sam Walker with the Boulder County Community Planning and Permitting Department. I was the reviewing planner for this docket, and hopefully you can see my screen if I get a nod from someone. Great. All right, so let's get started. So SU-2117, Mountain State's Children's Home Expansion at 14780107th Street, although just to note, this is a CDOT road that's US 287, and that's how I'm gonna refer to it during the presentation. So here's our vicinity map. We can see that the parcel is pretty large. It's located north of the city of Longmont along US 287 at the corner of 287 and Yellowstone Road. Here's our location map, just kind of showing that the supply ditch and the upper Highland ditch are running in the eastern areas of the property. So the owner of the property is the children's home itself. Oh, I forgot to add the last name, but Nick Mears, Randy Shaw, and Peter Stewart are the agents for this application. The zoning of the property is agricultural. The parcel is roughly 153 acres in size, although we're looking at a pretty small area of it today. And we'll talk about the existing conditions of the property here in a second. But the request that we're reviewing today is to modify an existing special use approval on the property that allows the children's home to operate in its current state. And the modification that has been requested is the addition of two new group care homes on the property, as well as additions to the administrative building, the school slash gym or multipurpose building, as it's kind of referred to in different ways, and then the reconstruction of four of the existing group care homes on the property with the same design as the new ones. And that'll probably make more sense in a minute. The existing floor area identified by the assessor on the property totals somewhere in the neighborhood of 78,000 square feet. That's inclusive of the eight existing total homes on the property. So right now, there's six group care homes on the property. There's two additional staff residences. Then there's several other agricultural buildings, the administrative building, the school and gym that are being added on to as well. So there's quite a bit of development on this large parcel, again totaling almost 80,000 square feet, which they are proposing to add to. So here's an aerial photo of the property. One thing I do want to point out is that this photo is from 2020, and it's actually not exactly matching what exists on the ground currently. So we can see that the vast majority of the parcel is taken up by an agricultural operation that is run by the children's home. And then all of the physical development is really concentrated in the southwestern corner of the property. So along the western side of their internal road, these are some of the residences on the property. And then we have one of the newer residences right here. I'm circling with my mouse kind of at the northern end. There's actually another new residence located north of that. We'll see in the site visit photos, so I did want to point that out. And then we'll look at the site plan in a second to show where the other development is proposed. This is a regional aerial map showing the kind of wider character of the area. One thing I do want to point out here is that in the compatibility or the use compatibility criteria, this was something discussed by staff, is that there are kind of several areas where small enclaves of residential development are backed up to large agricultural operations in the same way that this parcel kind of appears to be from US 287. So there's a few houses north of Yellowstone Road over here that back up to ag properties. There's houses interspersed throughout agricultural areas all around this parcel. So the comprehensive plan identifies agricultural lands of national significance in the southern and eastern areas of the property, which are mostly being avoided by this development. We also have view protection scores associated with the US 287 right-of-way at 1.87, kind of directly in the center of the parcel, and then 2.3 when we're at the intersection with Yellowstone. The contour map, I think, a little bit undersells the change in slope on this property because it's showing 40-foot contours, but there, these, you can kind of see the roadway and the underlying light art imagery in this contour map. But this, most of this development is kind of on a rise in 287. So the road kind of slopes up as it approaches these residences when they're on the right. So I did want to point that out. I don't know that there's a ton of concern there, but it's mentioned in the staff recommendation and some of our conditions. The geohazard map shows swelling soils across the entire property, which is pretty common in the plains areas, so they can't really avoid those swelling soils. And then we also have some landslide high susceptibility. I'm not sure that that actually exists on the property. Those areas don't look particularly steep to me. There are conservation easements nearby as well, although not any on the subject property itself. And then finally, we have the zoning map, which indicates the parcel is zoned for agriculture. And then we have a 110-foot supplemental setback measured from the center line of US 287. Doesn't really impact our development in this case, but it's worth noting that it's there. So this is the fact sheet submitted by the applicants. I want to point out a few things here. One is that they're showing, they're breaking out their proposed floor area in terms of kind of the use of the structure, although we kind of collectively are identifying most of the structures on this property as just kind of floor area because they're subsidiary to the children or the group care home use. So over here, we have the existing residences on the property, which their proposal will result in a total of 10 residences. That would be eight group care homes for where children will be housed, and then two additional staff residences, one for the farm manager as listed here, and then another one for, I think, just a staff member, if I remember correctly. And so what they're showing here is that six of the houses, or six of the group care homes currently exist on the property. They're proposing to reconstruct those with the new design at some point in the future, although this floor area number is inaccurate. The actual floor area number is 5,331, which is accounted for in our recommended conditions of approval. But their total of 10 residences is listed on this sheet. And then over on the right, we have the proposed additions to the administrative office building shown, which will increase by 1,100 square feet. And then the school and gym building are actually, they're broken out separately here, but they're combined on the parcel. And there's a proposed addition of 1,500 square feet to that building. The agricultural buildings will remain unchanged. So this is an overall site plan submitted by the applicants, just kind of showing the entire parcel, although the development, again, is concentrated in that southwestern corner. So we'll take a look at it this way. I want to note that north is to the left on this site plan, so we've got to turn so we can fit it a little bit better. So on the west side of Fraser Street, which is that internal road we saw in the aerial, we have the existing group care homes identified with this slanting lines, 1, 2, 3, and 4. Those are the homes that are proposed to be at some point reconstructed with the newly approved residence design. Up in the top left of the detailed site plan, we have cottages 6 and 7. So those, one of them cottage 6 is currently in use as a group care home. Cottage 7 is currently under construction, but was approved by staff in a modification of this special use in 2013. So the new structures are cottages 8 and 9, which are proposed to be located on the western boundary of the parcel close to US 287. Then we also are noting that addition to the office building on the east side here, so it's basically going to be completely hidden from US 287 and not visible. That's the 1,100 square feet addition, and then we have the school and gym building right here with an addition off the northern portion of it to the tune of 1,500 square feet. These are the elevations submitted for the new homes, so these elevations roughly match the two newest cottages, numbers 6 and 7. This is the design that was used for them. It's the design that's proposed for the two new cottages, and it's also the design that is proposed to replace the existing cottages 1 through 4 at some point in the future. So I want to point out that eventually, all of, all eight of the group care homes on the property will be pretty similar in terms of design and internal layout. Then this slide shows the elevations for the administrative building addition, which will substantially match what the current building looks like, just adding a little bit of office space off the back of it. And finally, we have the elevation submitted for the addition to the school and gym building. So this is the northern elevation. This is what kind of faces toward the administrative building. And then the west elevation, if you were standing on 287 looking into the property, although 287 is below it, so you can actually see it from there. So the next few slides, I took some clips out of their narrative and then highlighted the relevant portions of the narrative in order to hopefully make things somewhat clear. So the proposal is again for two new group care homes. They have approval for the, for the six that either exist on the property or the five that exist on the property and the one that's currently under construction. And then additions to the administrative building and the school, and then improvements to the four existing cottages that have been there for quite a while. They will increase the total number of group care homes on the facility from six to eight. However, only six of them will be occupied by children under treatment at any given time. So their total of children being treated on the property at any given time will be 36, which is, it's my understanding that that's limited by the license they have from the state. And then they will have eight house parent families, so the, all eight of the group care homes will be occupied by the host families at all times, but then the children will only be in six of the houses at a time, so they meet that requirement of being less than 36 children onsite. And then we just have the additions to the admin and school buildings mentioned again. And then finally, the mention that all of the cottages will eventually share the same design. So now we'll take a look at a few site photos. And so what I've done is put an aerial to the left, showing the location the photo was taken from roughly in the direction it's facing. Then on the right, you'll have the actual photo that we're looking at. So in this photo, we are looking at the northern elevation of the administrative building. So the new residence, or excuse me, the new addition to it will be off the back, kind of right where this big tree is. And then in this photo, we're looking at that location again. It's essentially taking up the area of this patio. You can see in both of the photos, so we're standing on the eastern side of the administrative building facing toward it. This is the school building from Fraser Street. The addition will be off of the left or the northern side of the building. In this area, it's kind of extending off this doorway. This is the location of cottage 9, which is one of the newly proposed cottages. So you can kind of see US 287. There's a few vehicles in the distance. You can see where the right-of-way is, and the residents will be kind of generally in the foreground of the image. And now we've just kind of driven a little bit further into that cul-de-sac, and we're looking at the location of cottage 8, which is just directly north of cottage 9. This is cottage 7. This is the one that was not shown in that 2020 aerial, but is currently under construction and is part of the existing approval, which allows for six total cottages on the property. And then this is cottage 6, which is the newest of them that is actively being used and has been on the property or was on the property in that 2020 aerial. And then the next few photos are just the existing cottages, which are going to be redeveloped. One of our recommended conditions of approval is that the new design for the cottages be used, but that the, the new cottages be located where the previously existing ones were, so we're not creating new areas of disturbance, and that's why these images are included. So cottage, I think, was 2, we just looked at on the site plan. Cottage 1, you can see they're all differing designs. That's part of the reason that the applicants have requested this change is to, the new design kind of reflects the actual needs of the facility. And these are just kind of standard residential homes, not really designed to act as group care homes. All right, so quickly summarizing the referrals. We got standard comments back from our building and permitting team. Parks and open space had concerns with visual impacts to the US 287 right-of-way and requested screening trees west of the new residences, as well as a disallowance of the landscape berm that was shown on the site plan. I didn't mention that before, but the applicants were fine with removing it. So that's one of our conditions of approval or recommendations for a condition. The access and engineering team noted that legal access to the property was demonstrated, didn't have any concerns with increased traffic caused by the two additional group care homes or cottages. Noted that adequate parking exists on the site and that a hauler license would be required for any material removed from the property during construction. The Colorado Department of Transportation just had a note that if they increase the amount of traffic coming off of Byerly Boulevard, which is the, one of the two entrances to the property from US 287 increases beyond a certain threshold, that they'll have to close it. Although it seems like there may have been, after discussing that with the applicants, it seems like there's some history there between CDOT and the fire protection district. The public health department just noted that there would need to be new septic systems permitted for the residences or for the cottages. The Highland Ditch Company sent pretty extensive comments with a lot of requirements for the new development. So we've just got a recommendation that the applicants provide evidence they've met those requirements as part of their permit submittal. The Little Thompson Water District noted that the existing residential tap on the property is pretty severely overdrawn, and the applicants need to rectify that before the water district can recommend approval. And so that's another recommended condition we have trying to address that, which I'll talk about in the criteria. We received no response from several of our referral agencies and got responses with no concerns from the conservation easement team here at the county, as well as Laramore County's planning department. And then a total of 26 public notifications were sent out, but staff did not receive any public comments about the application. So we're going to touch on four of the criteria that I thought were probably a little bit more relevant to the review and the conditions that were recommended by staff. Number one requires that the use meet the minimum zoning requirements for the district and all other applicable requirements. And so in this case, just want to note that this group care home use is allowed through the special use process in the agricultural zoning district where the property is located. The proposal is modifying an existing special use approval. The, the special use approval that exists on the property has gone through several iterations throughout the years. Those were described in the staff recommendation. And this new proposal generally seems to conform with the previously existing approvals. It doesn't really make any drastic changes. The only really new changes are the additional floor area and the two additional residences, which are kind of clustered with everything else. We do have a condition recommending that the applicants provide evidence they've gotten all of their required state, local, and federal permits, and then, of course, they have to meet building code. Criteria two concerns the compatibility of the use with the surrounding area. So overall, staff felt that there weren't really any concerns with the compatibility of the use to that surrounding area. Like I mentioned, when we were looking at that aerial photo, staff found that it really functions, the property functions more like a small neighborhood than an individual owner's parcel. So there's several residences dotted along what looks like a residential street along with a school building and the administrative building and the agricultural structures kind of further off of US 287. So it doesn't really look like one person's house and then a bunch of structures. It looks like a small neighborhood, which is similar to the character of the area. The two additional residences, staff don't feel are a significant change in the intensity of the use because the number of children being treated on the property is not increasing. The new structures were either previously approved, i.e. the, the buildings that are being reconstructed with the new design, or the new structures, the two additional group care homes are located pretty close to existing areas of disturbance. It was noted in the staff recommendation that the applicants have clearly contemplated those locations for a long time, although they haven't been formally approved by the department before. And then finally, that, like I said earlier, this group care home has gone through several iterations. The indications based on staff research is that it's been operating in some capacity on this property since the early, since the early 60s, and has been formally acknowledged by the county since at least the late 80s. And hasn't really seemed to negatively impact the character of the area in that time. Number six, or criteria six, notes that the use won't require a level of community facilities and services greater than what's available. And so this is where we tried to address the concerns of the water district and the overdrawn water tap. And so we're recommending that the applicants at their building permit submittal provide evidence that they've rectified the situation with the water district. And then I think this is the final criteria that I included, which is the adequately buffering or screening the use to mitigate visual impacts. So there were concerns with the impacts to the US 287 view protection corridor. Those concerns were also expressed in previous reviews of the application or of this use on the property. And so staff have recommended a condition of approval that requires some vegetative screening trees be planted between the new residences and the US 287 right-of-way. So that's the overall summary of the proposal, and staff are recommending that the planning commission recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that docket SU-2117, Mountain State's Children's Home Expansion, be conditionally approved, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff recommendation. And I do have the full text of those conditions on the next few slides if we need to take a look. Other than that, I'm available for questions.
Okay, Sam, thanks for that. And if you have any questions for Sam.
Commissioner Libby. Hey, Sam, thanks for the presentation. I want to ask if you could maybe provide some more detail about the roads and the, what the concern the, that CDOT had about traffic and how that might impact closure of that access. And I noticed that between, at some point, early 2010s and now, that significant area that north was constructed, that oval loop. And I'm wondering, are these county maintained roads or are they private roads? How does all that work? And are there any changes proposed as part of this?
The, I'm, this isn't really my area of expertise. I'm going to try to answer it to the best of my ability. So the roads that are internal to the property are just private. They kind of function like a public road, but they have a gate across the road that they can close if they don't want anyone coming in. It is a private road on the property. I think what CDOT is concerned with is typically they don't like to have multiple property accesses along major roads. And so in this case, there are two accesses. If I go back to the aerial photo, we'll see them. Well, here, you can see it in this one, that there is two accesses. There's the main access right here, which is Byerly Boulevard, and then there's a second access to the south down here. And so typically, CDOT doesn't like to have multiple accesses on a property to a major roadway, and they would want at least one of them closed if the traffic increases too much through one of those access points. That was all the comments that we got back. It's not really clear if they mean 20% of the traffic after this approval or before this approval. But that was, okay, hopefully that answers your question.
And I assume the change to the roadway at the north end of the property was approved in that earlier docket as well? Okay, cool. Thanks. That helps.
Any other questions for Sam?
This is Commissioner Rennie. On one of the site plans, there was like a proposed central pivot irrigation. That looked like the only thing that would kind of be maybe near the ditch or in conflict with the ditch easements. Is that part of this proposal? I was a little unclear on that.
So it's not really part of this proposal. I'm actually not sure if a center pivot requires a building permit, but the ag use is by right in this area, and it's currently existing. It's actually part of the previous approvals. So, yeah, I mean, that may be why the, why the ditch company was concerned. Although if we look at the aerial, it's pretty obvious to me that the center pivot is already working in that area, so they may just be upgrading the system or something like that. You could ask the applicants. I'm really not sure.
Any other questions for Sam?
This is Commissioner Schuh. So one question, the recommendation says that the revised site plan does not include the proposed landscaped berm. I was unclear whether the berm is existing or just proposed.
The berm is proposed. It doesn't currently exist on the property. So if we look at the site plan, this is the berm that's kind of in question right here. If you can see that on the left side of the site plan. And then if I go back to, well, here, I'll note that before we move on, that's in the area of cottage 8, so just north of it. And then if we go back and look at the site photos of the cottage 8 location, it's just flat right there. And so that was brought up, or the berm was brought up by our Parks and Open Space Planner, and I reached out to the applicants and asked them about it. And apparently, it was just something that was done in a previous iteration of the plans, but they weren't really, it was just kind of there, and they didn't really need it, so they were okay with just removing it. And we tend not to like berms unless they're done for a specific purpose, which it sounded like this one wasn't.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Sam? Any other questions for Sam? While we move to the applicants. Okay, thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
And we have an applicant presentation.
We do. The applicants have embroidered, and I believe Randy Shaw has joined us via phone. Randy, you should be able to press star six to unmute yourself at any time.
Okay. So yeah, I'm not sure who's presenting for the applicant, but it means to you and address. Got about twenty minutes.
Well, thank you for having us. My name is Nick Mears. I'm with Mountain States Children's Home. Are you guys able to hear me? Yes, great. We really don't have much to say. We just want to start off by saying thank you to Sam and 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 the staff. They've done an incredible job and he's done a great job of explaining this proposal and we just, he's been great to work with and we greatly appreciate him. One comment on his presentation I would like to make is in those slides, at one point it mentioned cottage number nine. And I could see how it would get confusing because we call them cottages, but in reality, we're just going through number eight. So we have six existing and then the proposal would be for two additional. So really, the number is only going up to eight. So there would be eight resident houses on campus. So other than that, just want to give you just a little brief background of who we are. Like Sam said, we started in nineteen sixty and we're licensed as an RCCF through the state of Colorado, which is a residential childcare facility. We are a five oh one C three, a nonprofit. As far as we know, we're the only childcare agency in the state of Colorado that will accept a child regardless of ability to pay. So because of that, we survive solely off of donations. And really, we're on the preventative side. We're trying to help children and families before the state steps in and puts them in either the foster system or state run facilities like us. So but really, that's that's all we have to say. And again, just want to say thank you for your guys' consideration and thank you for Sam and all the great work that he's put forth.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Well, then we will move on to public test.
Sorry, Mark, I did have one. I forgot to mention. I have one question. There was some comments in the responses. Do you guys have any concerns about complying with that or making a deal with them? Or is this something you can feel confident you can resolve?
Yeah, so we've actually reached out to Little Thompson and we've started the process of that commitment letter with them just to find out whether that's if we need to be looking at any kind of conservation or expansion of water tap and things like that. They're actually in the process right now. I actually talked to her this morning. But they're in the process of putting together a a proposal for us. And yeah, we're definitely willing to to look at that and do whatever we need to do.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant? If not, we'll go ahead and testimony. And do we have anyone signed up?
This is Anna Moller staff. We did have an individual signed up, Brian Goldstein. I don't see that Brian is on the call. So as far as I know, there's no one interested in speaking to this item today.
Okay, and I see that we have one person called in, at least one person.
Yes, this is Anna Moller staff. That is Randy. He is an applicant for this.
Okay, so I mean, I don't have to read the whole public hearing thing. It doesn't sound like we have anyone speak. I will bypass the instructions for public hearing then. And I will go ahead and close the public. Any final questions for staff or applicants? Then you will go ahead and close the public hearing and discussion. Any discussion from the commissioners?
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. This seems pretty straightforward to me. They're not increasing the intensity of the use and the I think that the fact that they're going to redo some of these cottages to be to have a more uniform look will be beneficial to the area. And looking at the criteria, it seems that they clearly meet all the criteria required. So I I don't have any problem with this application.
I would agree with that. Any other commissioners have any comments?
This is Commissioner Kennedy. Likewise, it looks like a pretty straightforward application. You know, one thing to possibly consider is they're increasing capacity, but not intensity of use. Part of what I wonder is like down the road, will there be the potential then to increase the intensity of use without needing to go through a similar due process? But you know, I think in the area that it's at, I don't really have a lot of concerns about that being a potential, but just something to think about.
Yeah, that's a good question. It doesn't seem to be even with what they're doing that they would be able to increase it that much. And Sam didn't mention Sam Walker, that is, that he thought that they were limited by the state as to thirty six. Is that right, Sam?
This is Sam Walker, CPMP staff. So the it's my understanding their license limits them to forty children on the forty children in treatment on the property at any given time, and their intention with this application is to go up to thirty six at any given time. So that's actually a we're, we had some discussions before the hearing with the applicants. Probably should have mentioned that. Which is that the condition of approval that we're recommending is a limitation on the number of children on the property, which holds them to forty. That was granted in a previous approval by the county. Once they saw that condition, they pointed out that some of their host families might have children. And so we're probably going to revise that condition after this hearing before it goes to the Board of County Commissioners to clarify what that limitation is on. But it is worth mentioning that, yes, as far as I know, they're limited to thirty or to forty treatment. They're limited to forty children in treatment on the property at any given time by their state licensing. There may be more children on the property as a result of host families having biological children, which is not addressed by the current condition, but will be addressed in the Board of County Commissioners hearing. We just didn't have time to craft one for this.
Is that something that we can just sort of verbally include in our recommendation?
I think you can. If you if you want to, you can try to change the condition to say the the number of children in treatment or something like that. I think that's condition. Condition number four. And I can share my screen if you want to take a look at.
Okay. Thank you for that, Sam. Any other discussion? Any other thoughts on modifying condition for objection, I guess, to modify.
Commissioner, any no objection?
Okay. Doesn't seem like we have a lot to talk about here, so doesn't mean we have a motion.
Sure thing. I move that the plan commissioner recommend that the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approve docket SU dash two one dash zero zero one seven Mountain States Children's Home Expansion with the conditions listed in the staff report, along with the amendment that was just discussed in the recording.
Thank you, Commissioner Libby. Any second?
Commissioner Shu, I'll second that.
The roll call vote, Commissioner Bloomfield, I, Commissioner Libby.
I.
Commissioner Kennedy.
I.
Whitney.
I.
Hi.
Commissioner Goldfarb.
I.
All right, passes unanimously. Thank you very much for that. So that goes that closes our only agenda item and I believe that Kim wanted to talk about scheduling.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Thanks to the applicant.
All right. So you can go ahead and convene the or adjourn the meeting and then we'll just stop recording to go over these logistics.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Goldfarb motion to adjourn.
Commissioner, let me second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye.